All right, good evening. I'll call the Air Select Board to order for Tuesday, December 5th, 2023. This meeting slash hearing of the Air Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should take and make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom and Channel 8. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom meeting ID number 897-90800793 or by calling 929-2056099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager at ATM@air MA.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 100 prior to the meeting. Now, as you have them, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
I do not.
Okay.
We'll make a motion at the board. Vote to approve the agenda as presented.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair says aye. No announcements for this evening? Perfect. Thank you. Is anyone here for public input tonight? Going once, going twice. Okay, first item, excuse me, is continuation from the November 21st, 2023 meeting, reimbursement for the sewer connection fee at 236 Snake Hill Road. Let's come on down.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I may just kind of give you a brief little update. So Ms. Furman came to us on the November 21st. As you know, you were not with us that night and asked for reimbursement for the $6,000 sewer connection fee because years ago he had paid $500 for hookup and told that that would be it. Unfortunately, there was no proof, and so since it was just the two of us, there was really no kind of discussion, so I asked that it be tabled for tonight.
Excellent. Thank you. You, Mark, welcome.
How are you?
Thanks for coming back. Apologize, we weren't able to resolve this last time.
No problem.
So if you don't mind, so back in the eighties, you'd...please.
When I owned a house on 236 and a vacant lot on 234, both the same piece of property. I was in the process of designing and building my house, current house, on 234, and I was going to rent out the house on 236. They made plans and put sewerage down Snake Hill Road. At that time, I was told if I paid the $500 then, number one, I needed it for my own house that I'm currently living in, in 234, and I also paid the $500 for the other one because it was on an old septic system. It was a...and it was going to fail at some point. And I was told, you pay it now, we'll stub it onto your property, you won't have to dig up the road, duh-dee-duh-dee-duh-dee. When you want to use it, tie into it and go. You'll...obviously, I had to pay to get it to the house. So I paid them both, and now I'm building a house. I tore down, since tore down that house a couple of years ago, and I'm now building a house. And to get the building permit, you have to get a water and sewer permit, $6,100. And I said, well, I've already paid it. And they said, well, you'll have to take that up with the selectmen while I'm here.
Okay.
So the, the...
That's Mark.
Public works. Bam. Sorry.
That's okay.
Neither one of us have proof either way. The only proof that I do have is that I'm currently building the house, and I didn't have to cut the road. I didn't have to dig it through. So my point is, I know I paid the $500 bucks 35 years ago. I do not have, I don't have records of it, the checks for 35 years ago, so.
Okay.
That's where we are.
So 35 years ago, did, were the houses connected to the sewer system at that point?
No.
Or they were just stubbed at the road? So you've been on septic since then?
Well, the original house was on septic.
Okay.
And it never failed, so I never hooked up. But now, putting up a new house, I want to hook up. And yes, the, my house that I'm currently in has, was originally hooked up, and it's working fine.
Okay. And Dan, if you can just explain, the hookup fee is to cover the hookup at the road onto the property?
Correct. So the connect, well, the connection fee, the $6,000, that's just to connect to the sewer. So that's our typical fee for the join the club. So, you know, now you can discharge into our system. So that's what that fee is. So even though there's a stub there, once you make that connection, you owe the connection fee. So as Mr. Furmanian said, we don't, there's no record we could find on anything. You know, I've seen projects, like, for example, when sewer was originally installed in town, there were betterments assessed. We didn't find anything on advanced payments. It's, it's not to say that didn't happen. But like, for example, Groton, the sewer extension into Groton, we stubbed, we put service stubs to all the properties there. We didn't charge anything yet, and there was no advanced payment option. But if they want to come connect to sewer, they can, they'll pay at that time. So, so right now, it's really just, there's no evidence, but, you know, it could have happened, but I don't have any, any records in our records, so.
Other question, just, and I know you weren't here 35 years ago, so bear with me. When a large sewer project goes in, so like, I'm on Oak Ridge Drive, and I know I bought late 90s, my, the guy I bought from ended up tying into the sewer just before he sold to us. Was there a deadline of when houses were supposed to hook up to the, to the sewer?
I don't have any, I don't have any.
And I know it was a long shot, so thank you for humoring me.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Questions, comments from other board members?
Well, the other problem was, is, so first of all, nobody doesn't think that it didn't happen, but we can't prove it happened or didn't happen. But the other problem is, Dan brought up, and it's even in his memo in the packet, is that, you know, are we setting a precedence for other homes on that street? So I brought up, for discussion purposes, the last time, what about, you know, $3,000 versus the $6,000? And, you know, to be fair, I mean, obviously, that's not the answer he wants, okay? But to be fair, he was open to at least the discussion. So, and that's kind of where it got left, as far as, you know, so.
Okay. I feel like everyone's just staring at me.
Because you're the only one that wasn't here.
Exactly.
And I, I still maintain the same stance as I had the last meeting. I feel like a full refund is appropriate. If the town can't prove, I think the burden of proof should be on the town, not on Mark.
Both compelling arguments.
And this is why we tabled it for tonight. Well, I still, I wanted it to be a fair discussion.
Yeah, I see it both ways. And I agree with, like, you know, Dan's comment of, like, the join the club, and then, you know, also, you know, because when I grew up, when sewer came down my street, when I was a kid, like, my parents had, I think it was three years, where they had to hook up to it. So there was definitely a deadline. And then if they didn't, they were actually assessed liens, et cetera. So I'm kind of leaning, I'm kind of leaning towards more of a split, because I do think that, you know, you do need to kind of pay to join the club, so to speak, and unfortunately, there's no proof that that was done years ago. And I know that, you know, to Sean's point, that the burden should be on us, but, you know, also, in that timeframe, I would, I would expect that the hookup to the sewage would have, should have happened, you know, because there's a reason why we put sewage in, you know, it was, you know, for the better quality of the groundwater, et cetera. Pauline, do you have a question, comment?
Comment. Scott, thank you for recognizing me. I've talked with Mark about this. I distinctly remember when the town moved forward with this proposal to allow non-town sewer residents to link in or stub in to town sewers so they can build later. I have no recollection of any deadline to do that, but unfortunately, the selectmen who were in office at the time, at least two of them have passed. So if you're not inclined to waive Mark's request in its entirety, I would encourage you, or Robert, or Dan, to speak with former selectmen, not myself perhaps, but others, and I'll give you their names privately, who will remember the details, because I believe Mr. Furmanian is entitled to a full rebate of this money since he paid in 1988, I think it was, Mark, or thereabout. And, you know, I don't have my tech, my checking account bills from them either. But there are records in the town, there are minutes, and there are other documents that should be accessible with a lot of effort. But I think if you talk with a couple of your former selectmen, you might get an answer to the question.
Thank you. Dan, is there an inventory of the houses where there's existing sewage that are still on septic systems?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we have some information on that, especially in that region, because we have a lot of stubs, especially in the Wrightway neighborhood. So we do have some information in that area, yeah. So we do have, we have some record there, which we're done.
So just to kind of follow up, I mean, okay, we can go back. So we're talking almost 30 years ago, right? So we're expecting anyone to remember specifically that you paid, because I would think that the meeting minutes would say that, you know, maybe that this was being offered to the community, but not necessarily...
I think what Pauline was saying was whether there was a deadline or not.
Right, but it wouldn't necessarily show proof that an individual paid either, so.
Correct. Okay, so how about this? 6,000, it was 61, and I don't know how you came up with 61. How do you come up with 61? It was $2,000 a bedroom. Where's the one?
It could have been the trench permit or one of the other permits.
Let's, we'll call it $6,000. I've already paid five. $5,500, we'll split it. We're done.
Okay. I'm good with that. So splitting of $5,500?
Yep.
That's $2750.
Yep.
I'm good with that. Anyone else with a thought?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
I'll agree only because Mark presented it. That's an option.
I mean, obviously, I'd rather sit here, but if you want me to come back again and go through all this, but I've already paid.
I still, I still, you know, am willing with the three, you know, but we can do the...
Well, $2750 is awesome.
Yeah, I know.
Well, then we'll go with the three. Actually, it should be the other way, if you really think about it. It should be 35, because I've already paid the three, the fives. $3250. Whatever you want. All right. Let's be done with it.
Okay, fair enough. Do you have a number that you would like, Janice?
I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve $3,000 reimbursement.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair says aye. Thank you for coming back. Thank you for putting up with us tonight.
Very much.
Not a problem. I live in here. Good man, done man.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, you also. Oops. Carly, did you get that present I left on your chair?
I did, thank you.
All right. So actually, before we move on, I think we should probably have a larger conversation about this. So Dan, can you get an inventory of the houses, particularly in that area?
Yeah.
Because there is a concern about, you know, I think we do need to set a precedent going forward.
Next item on the agenda is public hearing, fiscal year 2024 tax classification hearing.
Town of Air Notice of Public Hearing, Air Select Board, Fiscal Year 24 Tax Classification Hearing. The Air Select Board will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, at 6:05 PM, vote in-person, Airtown Hall, 1 Main Street, Air Mass, and via remote participation for the town's fiscal year 2024 tax classification. At the public hearing, the Air Board of Assessors shall provide all information and data relevant to making a decision on allocating the tax burden, including the fiscal effect on the available alternatives. For call-in information prior to the hearing, please contact ATM@air.ma.us or 978-772-8220, extension 100. Date of public hearing, Tuesday, December 5th, 2023. Time of public hearing, 6:05 PM. Location of public hearing, in-person, Airtown Hall, 1 Main Street, Air Mass. Remote participation meeting held on Zoom. Meeting materials and information may be obtained by contacting Carly Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager, at ATM@air.ma.us or 978-772-8220, extension 100.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening.
The purpose of this tax classification here on this evening is to adopt a residential factor. And at the end of the presentation, I will be asking the Select Board to vote to determine a residential factor, which will determine the percentage share of the tax burden, which will be allocated to each class of property. We have five classes of property. There are residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property. The next slide has some commonly used terms that I will be referencing throughout this presentation. I'm not going to go through them individually, but just, just for reference. And then page four is the role of the assessors and who determines the tax rate. The role of the Board of Assessors is to value property for the purpose of equitable taxation based on the fair market value by what sales have taken place for the prior calendar year. And FY 2024 was a review of 2022 sales, and the 2021 sales were utilized for classes that had limited sales. And this review was in accordance with all the guidelines established by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. The Board of Assessors does not set the tax rate, and the tax rate is determined each year as a result of the money the town and the residents decide to spend at town meeting. Residents who attend the annual town meeting decide what services the Town of Air provides, and these decisions may impact the tax rates. And as a result, the residents of the Town of Air play a role in setting the tax rates. The tax rate formula is the tax levy divided by the real and personal property total value, and that would be the estimated proposed tax rate. The next three slides are three community options that the Select Board can adopt. We have not adopted these in the past. The first one is the open space discount, and this is for land maintained in open space or natural condition which contribute significantly to the benefit and enjoyment of the public. We currently have no open space in air, so this really wouldn't apply. But if, if we did have open space, the Select Board may discount up to 25% of the open space share of the tax levy. The second option is the residential exemption, and this is applied, this could be applied to every residential property, which the principal residence of the taxpayer. The exemption is subtracted from the assessed value of eligible parcels. It would exclude seasonal homes, accessory residential land, or known, or, excuse me, non-owner occupied residential property. We have not adopted this in the past, but the Select Board may adopt a discount of up to 35% of the average residential valuation. And the third one is the small commercial exemption, and this is designed to provide tax relief for small businesses. The tax burden is shifted within the commercial and industrial class. And as far as qualify, the criteria for qualifying, eligible properties must be included on the list, which would be provided annually to the assessors by the Department of Labor and Workforce Development. And the properties that would qualify must have a valuation of less than $1 million and an average annual employment of 10 or fewer people. The Select Board may adopt an exemption of up to 10% of the value of eligible parcels, but in the past, we haven't adopted this. And I included pros and cons, just for reference. The next slide, page nine, is our valuation percentages, the past five years. As you can see in this chart, as you go up from 19 up to 24, 72% of the valuation in air is residential, and 28% is for commercial, industrial, and personal property. So you can kind of see that the trend is definitely rising on the residential end and declining slightly on the commercial, industrial, and personal The next slide is the FY 2024 valuation summary within our classes. Again, there's a breakdown of the valuation that we had for FY 2024. 71.9% was residential, 8.4% commercial, 10.7% industrial, 9% personal property. In comparison to last year's total value, we had an increase of 8.3%. And our average single-family value for FY 2024 was $485,123, which is up 8.5% from last year's FY 2023 average single-family value of $447,100. The median, commercial and industrial value, and I use the median just because we have a wide array, array of businesses, from the small, from the pop, to the larger industrials. It's more an accurate measurement. That is $342,565, which increased 4.2% from last year's median of $328,600. So as you can see from these numbers, commercial only rose 4%. Residential was double the commercial. And the next slide is the FY 2024 tax levy and tax levy summary. Our tax levy for FY 2023 was $29,225,729. If you add the 2.5%, that's $736,43. And our growth for FY 2024 was $1.1,28,338. Our debt exclusions was $1.341,838. And our maximum tax levy for FY 2024 is $32,426,548. That's allowable. The table below, the tax levy summary, our FY 2024 tax levy is $28,584,929. And in comparison to last year, we had a change of $1.61,137,124, which is up 6.1%. But if you look at our excess levy capacity, which is in the center, it's the difference between the actual levy and the levy limit. Even though we went up 6%, we still have 3.8 million of excess, so we're not even close to, to the maximum. And the levy is a huge factor in determining the tax rate and the tax bill. Page 12 is just a five-year summary of our tax levy. And as you can see, in comparison to last year, we, we did go up, you know, quite a bit. But the other years prior, we're coming out of COVID, so in 2020, we're at 8.5%. Then COVID hit, and it's kind of been going back, back up, like, there. So you can kind of see that we're out of COVID now. Everything is back open, so, and inflation. So that's why the increase, our costs have gone up. FY 2024, if we had a single tax rate, it's the tax levy divided by our valuation for FY 2024, a single tax rate would be $16.50, and that's if we didn't shift to the commercial, industrial, personal property. Last year's single tax rate was 16.88, so it was, we have a decline of 2.3%. And slide 14 is just a summary of what was last year's tax rate, valuation, and what was adopted by the Select Board. A residential factor of 0.7375% was voted on November 15th of 2022, and a CIP shift factor of 1.63. Now we go to the, the next page, which is our estimated tax rates for FY 2024. And this data was based on an average single-family home of $485,123 and a median commercial-industrial value of $342,565. If, I have the yellow highlighted just because in sharing the burden, 1.66 or a residential factor of 0.7427 is equally shared by the residential and commercial-industrial. If you wanted to go to last year's, the closest would be a residential factor of 0.7388, which would kind of put more burden on the commercial-industrial and personal property. So these are all estimated numbers, and they would change if the open space discount, the residential exemption, or the small commercial exemptions were chosen tonight. And as far as data on what, if the 1.66 or the 0.7427 residential factor was chosen, the average single-family tax bill would be $5,942.75, and the median commercial value, the average tax bill would be $9,379.43, and that's annually.
And that's based upon dollar increase, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's based on the residential tax rate of $12.25 per thousand, and the commercial-industrial tax rate of $27.38.
Thank you.
I wanted to give you that annual numbers as well on that. And the next slide on page 16 is just a, a summary or history of what the tax rate has been. I have the, the highlighted estimated 2024 proposed tax rates based on that prior slide. And then the last slide is 17, and at this point, I'm going to ask the Board to choose the residential factor to determine the tax share burden for the property classes. And we can choose a single, they can choose a single rate tax for all the property classes or a split tax rate. And if that's chosen, a higher burden of the tax amounts would shift to the commercial-industrial and personal property taxpayers, which would be less tax burden for the residential taxpayers. And also ask you to choose the other community options, whether it be the small, commercial, residential exemption, or the open space discount. And that is it for my presentation.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board members?
I don't, I haven't.
Only comment, I mean, as far as the other community options, the, the three exemptions, discount, I mean, every year, we've looked into it, and it doesn't benefit
Correct.
anybody. So, I do have a question. I guess I'm being thrown by the wording on the hearing requirement choice as far as a single tax rate versus a split tax rate.
That's on this chart. Maybe it was the wording that's...
Right, I guess I just, I guess, maybe it's because it's been a year, but I just, it's thrown me because it's written that way, and I don't recall ever really looking in, just looking into a single tax rate. That's why I'm just kind of thrown. Yeah.
Okay.
Because that would just mess up everything, wouldn't it?
It would.
Yeah.
It would. And, and actually, if you look on line one in the page 15 on the estimated chart, that would actually show what would happen. The average tax bill would increase $2,400, and it would be negative for the commercial-industrial.
But I mean, maybe we've asked this before, and I don't remember, but I mean, could this Board even go to decide to single tax rate, or would we have to vote?
Yeah, it could. We have that power.
All right. Well, it's just, it's never really come up. So I, like I said, the way this slide is worded, it just, it's just thrown me, so.
I think with the wording, it's that the tax split number is whether it's a one or a, like, one point, whatever we, we decide. So, because we do have that option for a single tax rate.
No, I'm talking about these actual words as far as going to a single tax rate versus a split tax rate.
Just have to present it, correct?
Yeah.
Because it is an option that we have.
Right, right. It just, it's just throwing me the way it was, the way it was placed on the slide, so. It's just throwing me the way it was placed on the slide, so.
All right. Any questions or comments from the public at this point? Just want to include everyone since this is a public hearing. Pauline?
Sorry, I have to keep remembering to unmute. We have talked in years past about a single tax rate a number of times, and I say that only because that was the last comment I heard, and I hope as a resident, we don't go there. I don't know who the speaker is, and I apologize for that, but for the public's benefit, would you please explain the FY 2024 excess levy capacity of $3.8 million?
Do you need some help?
So Pauline, I'll just interject while she's getting her paperwork. So the excess levy capacity means that we are taxing under the amount that we could be without going for any sort of override or additional debt exclusions or anything like that. So it's a good thing that we have this, and the last, I've looked back about seven years, it's been increasing every year. Last year was at about $3.452 million. This year, it's at the $3.841. And again, it's just the amount that we're asking to be raised and appropriated on the levy isn't as much as the 2.5% plus growth plus debt exclusions.
Thank you very much, Barbara. I know that. I wanted you all to explain it because I intend to share the meeting, and I didn't want to be the one to explain it. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Pauline. So shall we, let's start with the exemptions. If you want to take votes on those first, then we can discuss the tax rate itself.
Make a motion that the Board not approve the small commercial exemption. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
I'll make a motion that the Board did not approve the residential exemption. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
And I'll make a motion that the Board not approve the open space discount. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. So looking at the shift factor, I agree with the methodology of splitting the difference between both residential and commercial, so I am comfortable with 1.66 as highlighted, but if either member has any other comments or thoughts, please feel free.
I'm comfortable with that as well.
No, I'm comfortable. It's the most balanced.
Okay. You have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Select Board set the tax rate at the 1.66 also as 0.7427, the residential factor.
A second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you both.
I make a motion that the Board close public hearing. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor? And Chair says aye. Thank you.
I said it in my head.
Can't hear you in there, sorry.
Sorry. I'm losing it.
Next item is the 2024 license renewals.
Mr. Chairman, through you, I'll turn it over to the Assistant Town Manager to present the 2024 license renewals for consideration by the Board.
Thank you, Robert. Mr. Chair and members of the Board, in the packet is the annual memo I do relating to the license renewals that are done by this Board, Class 1, 2, and 3. Class 1 is new vehicles, Class 2 is used vehicles, and Class 3 is a junk auto, so a junkyard for layman's terms. Then the common vic licenses for any establishment where you can go in and order food, sit and eat it, you need a common vic trailer license. Then we have the liquor licenses and amusement licenses. So in years past, what we've done, I've presented the whole list, which is in the packet, and we hold everything until we've checked with the Tax Office, the DPW, the Board of Health to make sure there's no outstanding fees or fines. And then once we have payment, we can issue the license for 2024.
Excellent. Thank you.
And I have a stack for you guys to sign.
Of course.
For the meeting.
Thank you. You're so good to us.
Best meeting of the year.
Exactly. Grist up your wrists.
Any questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Excellent.
Do we yells one, right? That's how we do it?
Yep.
Okay. I'll make a motion that the Board vote to approve the licenses for fiscal year, or for the year 2024, license renewals for 2024 as presented in the packet.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. So thank you, Carly. And next on to the Town Manager's report. Mr. Poprin.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, good evening. I just have two items, which are basically updates. I don't have any action items for tonight, so I'll sort of combine the administrative update and the FY 25 budget process update together in the interest of time. First, under the budget, as the Board is aware, as you're all involved in aspects of it, it's that time of year where it's all things budget. The Budget Directive did go out on December 1st, which there's a copy in the packet, as in previous years, asking all departments to prepare a level service budget based on last year, where there are potential increases or new items, to flag those out with a detailed memo and explanation. Of course, a particular focus on efficiencies and savings where possible, and also stated new personnel positions for FY 25. So departments will have, per the Board's budget calendar, until December 29th, when all of those FY 25 budgets are due. And by January 12th, I'll be transmitting Draft 1 of the budget to the Select Board and the FINCOM and to the public at that time. And we're scheduled to have the first public budget forum on January 24th, so we are underway on the development of the budget. In some very positive news for the Town, the Department of Revenue has certified the Town's free cash. The certified free cash for the general fund for the Town will be $1,677,665, and I believe this is the seventh or eighth year in a row that there's been over a million in free cash. The Water Enterprise has over $4.6 million. The Sewer Enterprise, just over $3.1 million. Solid Waste, $128,000. Ambulance, $415,549. So again, very strong certified free cash, which is a testament to the Town's strong financial position and management position. I want a special thanks to Carrie Cooper, the Town Accountant, and Barbara Tierney, the Finance Manager, for all of their work, also the DPW Superintendent and the Water and Sewer Superintendent, Mr. Van Shawick and Ms. Abram, for their work on the water, the sewer, and solid waste, and to Chief Johnston and Deputy Chief Januskevich on the ambulance enterprise. So we will have more decisions on that as we move towards town meeting. Mr. Chair, as you're aware, because you're the Chair of the Committee, capital is well underway. The Capital Committee has met with all of the major departments that it needed to meet with, and their next meeting is on December 14th at 5:00, where they'll start the review and recommendation process on capital. The Rate Review Committee is scheduled for a meeting next Tuesday, December 12th, at 4:00 p.m., where they'll be picking up on the recommendations for the third-party analysis of the transfer station, and then beginning of the beginnings of the discussion on the water and sewer rates for next year, and of course, more to come on that. Lastly, on the budget front, the Executive Byboard, after the last about year and a half doing a review and update of the financial policies, voted last week to recommend the update to the financial policies to the Select Board and to the FINCOM. We'll be sending them to the Select Board and the FINCOM and looking for the Select Board to put that on the agenda for December 19th. Ultimately, we need the Select Board and FINCOM to approve those, and then they will go into effect, and we'll have an executive memo with the highlights on the changes. On the health insurance front, just to keep the Board updated, we continue to move forward with the transition from the Minuteman Nishoba Health Group to MIA, which will be in effect on July 1st of 2024. Not a lot that further has to be done at this point until the spring. Again, Amanda Lewis, the benefits and payroll manager, continues to monitor that front. Since the Select Board last met, we have learned that there are now six members that have indicated their intention to leave the Minuteman Nishoba Health Group. There's going to be a meeting next week of the Minuteman Nishoba Health Group, as they are discussing, actually potentially dissolving. So the Town has been proactive, I believe, strongly believe, in the decision that it made. The Senior Center Site Selection Committee had its first meeting on November 16th. It is scheduled for another meeting this Thursday, December 7th, at 6:00 p.m. Those meetings are here in person with a remote Zoom participation option for the public. At the first meeting, the Senior Center Site Selection Committee voted that they are going to start exclusively with a focus on all town-owned land first, exhaust all potential townland options first. Obviously, there's an economic value to that, and with the added caveat, just so it's clear, it was made clear prior to that meeting, it was made clear at that meeting that the issue of Peroni Park is completely off the table. So when we say a focus on townland, it's everything in Air except Peroni Park, on the town focus. After the committee is satisfied and hopefully has a recommendation from that front, if they need to, they will then switch to private options. But the committee felt to approach it in that direction. So we'll continue to keep you updated as that process moves forward. And then there were some great events recently in town since the Board last met. A special thanks to the Fire Department for another successful annual Thanksgiving Day Road Race, as well as their annual turkey party, which was a success. And this past Saturday was the annual holiday tree lighting and candlelight stroll. A special thanks to Carly Antonellis for all of her efforts and fundraising efforts for that, Alan Manoyan for his work with the candlelight stroll, Chuck Schultz from Facilities, and all of our public safety personnel that made it a successful event. And lastly, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to recognize one of our guests this evening, Mr. Caleb Januskevich, who is in the audience. He's a boy scout, and he is required to attend a public town meeting as part of one of his civic badges, so that's why he's here tonight. I offered to have him give my report, but he passed. But I want to recognize Caleb is a good friend, and we're happy to have him here, and he is here with his dad, Deputy Chief Januskevich. So Caleb, I hope you're taking good notes. So with that, Mr. Chairman, unless there's any questions from the Board, that concludes my report.
I do just have a question, and I don't know if there's a specific answer. So if Minuteman is going to dissolve, I'm assuming that the other members in Minuteman would end up going into, I'm sorry, I can't remember which one. MIA, thank you. Would that be more beneficial if there are more members in MIA, or could that possibly drive costs up?
Yes, so we
Just curious.
Yeah, as we look at it, it would be preferential from our point if they dissolved, because most likely, almost all of them would be going to MIA. That would add that pool. Also, with the way the Minuteman Nishoba Health Group agreement is written, if they dissolve, we believe that it would be a slight more favorable in terms of the exit costs as opposed to if we leave. And we are still working diligently to get that information. So we'll keep you updated.
Excellent. Thank you. And the only other thing I have, I just want to make a quick comment. So I know we had the tax classification hearing tonight, which was 3.8 unused levy capacity, $1.6 million of free cash. I want to send thanks to all the department heads, who, what I consider efficient budgeting, because they provide a lot of services with a budget that is minimally increased every year, and having, I know many of us have been doing this for years, but they are, what they do with the budgets they have and the service they provide is greatly appreciated. So thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Board.
Next item is new business or Select Board member questions. There's nothing on the agenda, but I'll update anything with Board members. I don't have anything for tonight either, so that would leave us going into executive session.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that the Select Board move into executive session pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A, exemption number six, consider acquisition of real property, 71 Sandy Pond Road. Exemption number three, litigation strategy, AFFF slash PFAS litigation, and that the Board will not resume back into open session, but will adjourn from executive session.
Seconded.
Roll call the vote. Ms. Livingston?
Aye.
Mr. Copeland?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. We are in executive session. Thank you, everyone, tonight for joining us.